Peace and peace and just let us have peace with among our people, Lord Jesus. Just help us to do that which is right in your name's sake. We ask, amen.
Amen.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, absences. We have none at this time. Item number two, presentations, proclamations, we have none. Item number three, citizens' comments. Christina Bertrand.
Yes, and there was documents attached to that, and I do have Lieutenant Ward making the copies. As soon as he's done, I will distribute. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was not aware.
What are you talking about?
I don't know.
What are we talking about?
Citizens' comments. Citizens' comments.
This involves.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll pass things.
There we go.
Thank you.
They've been doing their homework.
Yeah. Christina, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christina Bertrand. I live at 1298 Catherine Street here in Orange City. I have lived in Orange City for the last 21 years. I have been married for 19 years with one daughter at UHS, and I retired from the county of Volusia as a corrections sergeant after 28 and a half years. I am here representing myself as a concerned citizen and standing up for others. After I retired, I wanted to give back by volunteering my time again, and I started hearing the name Marx, what underhanded stuff she was doing and saying. So I started educating myself on this person who represents the city, who is continuously misusing her position. I am very disappointed in some of the council members who blindly follow behind her, believing everything she says. And you were voted in by the citizens to act on their behalf and make decisions for the betterment of the community. I'm not talking about everyone. After doing research, I found several cases that were concerning, all public information. In 2003, an injunction for protection was issued for repeat violence, and it does not show that it was ever lifted. In 2017, she had a lawsuit with West Volusia Tourism for the county attorney had to sue her to get a small amount of money returned after an event she quit. And can you imagine how much the taxpayers lost over this suit after the county attorney's time? And on top of that, she kept $3,500 she didn't even earn. Why would anybody hire her event company? Her nonprofit even held an event in the park where she used the Volusia County helicopter to bring in the Easter bunny. I would like to see the bill for that, that the taxpayer paid. And she sits on this council and argues against other local charities being helped by the city. It seems to me that the only time Marx does anything is for a photo op, to get people to cover her paycheck by donating money to her nonprofit. Marx joined the council with her own personal agenda and gains and minds to use the platform and position to meet people, to influence them, to give money in the name of charity, only to put a significant amount in her pocket, and to bully the city and council into letting her do what she wants for her benefit. A few weeks ago, I was accosted by Marx at my vehicle and told to leave a public charity yard sale after I was already in my vehicle to leave. Marx banged on my window and demanded I leave and said I caused her enough problems. A citizen asking questions about money given to a nonprofit should not be an issue if you have nothing to hide. The Orange City Scouts Club has been around for 66 years, and for the last 21 years, I have been here in the city volunteering with the club and other local clubs. We have all worked together hand in hand for the benefit of the city and for the people in it with no issue. I provided copies of the questions that I asked the state back in July of '22, in which Marx's nonprofit did not respond, and I have attached the copies of that. I have also provided a list of cases you can look up and educate yourself.
Wrap it up.
I encourage city employees, council members, and citizens to do your homework concerning anyone in elected office or position of influence. In today's world, you cannot be too careful, and most of all, I pray that this will stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
As city attorney, I just want to, I'm not commenting on directly to the last speaker or to the substantive comments. I just want to generically remind the council, and for the record, state that we do have in our council rules and procedures, limitations, as we can enforce them under constitutional law, which is always changing based upon the United States Supreme Court. But in our rules, we do place limitations on those that come and make presentations, like this young lady did just now about her comments. And generically, as long as these comments are not disruptive, as long as they are not slanderous, as long as they are not completely unrelated to what our business is, then we have the obligation to let individuals, taxpayers, citizens speak. We have the obligation to listen. The nature of democracy is not pretty. And as, you know, the old expression, it's kind of like watching sausage being made. It tastes good, but you don't want to know what's in it. That's kind of what we're doing, and tonight's a good example of that. And so, a lot of times, we don't want to hear people complaining. It's not a lot of fun. But the law says, and the Supreme Court of the United States says, that we have to listen to it. But there are limitations, and this is the thing I wanted to say. It doesn't give people to come up and disrupt our meeting. We can't tell people to not talk because we don't like what they say, or that hurts our feelings. That's what the courts have said. But if they're saying things that are, I guess the old cliche is, hey, there's a fire in a movie theater. That's not free speech. That's not what the United States Constitution protects. And so, to, you know, to use that here, if someone comes up and starts cursing at us, or making threats at the audience, or the people in the room, or this council, or your charter officers, or things like that which are disruptive to the process, then absolutely, Mayor, as the presiding officer, you have the right to work with the law enforcement to make sure that that does not interrupt our meeting. It's just that we can't tell people that we don't want to hear what they have to say because we don't like the content of their speech. And I felt like this would be a good opportunity to make that distinction and to clarify that.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else from the council, from the public that would like to speak to the council? Okay, I'll close the public comment section of this, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
You got a second. Haley?
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Papello?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. We will move on to item number six, Public Hearing slash Ordinance's second final reading, 6A, ordinance number 679. Mr. Reichman, you read that one, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orange City, Florida, annexing 3.1 acres, more or less, of certain real properties into the corporate limits of the City of Orange City, including all portions of the adjacent rights of way as described, located immediately west of Interstate 4, with parcel numbers as follows: 801-30308, 0010, 801-30309, 0010, 801-30310, 0010, and 801-30310, 0014, and lastly, 80240000, 0080. Deep breath. Redefining the boundaries of the City of Orange City, providing for assignment of a council district, repealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict or with, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Becky Mendez.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council Becky Mendez. This is very awkward. Becky Mendez, Development Services Director, City of Orange City. Normally, I don't speak at second and final reading, but it has been a month since we had the last one. There's different advertising requirements for annexation. All of those have been met. Just very briefly, it's about three, a little over three acres, next to I-4. There is a larger 308-acre planned unit development rezoning application that's in-house and under review called Duck Lake, and this property will be included in that rezoning application. But we have to annex it first for it to be included, so that we can all review it and deliberate. City Council approved the annexation at first reading on July 9th, and that's just a concept plan of the latest version, this little green area right here. This is Harley Strickland that connects to Veterans Memorial Parkway. Home Depot is here, and if Harley Strickland were extended, it would curve up, follow along I-4, and terminate at their north boundary. This little green area is the portion to be annexed. It would, according to this plan, be used for open space and the extension of Harley. The annexation follows and complies with the Florida statute requirements. It complies with our comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies. The PUD will be under separate review, and the tax revenue from the annexation is $7 a year.
Oh, $7?
Yes, sir.
That's really watching the citizens' money.
That's right. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt ordinance 679 at second and final reading.
Great. Anybody have any questions for Becky? Comments?
I mean, we just, we already kind of went over this already. It's just housekeeping of going through the process, so I don't think I have much to say.
Mr. Mayor, Council, that's correct. This is the second reading. This is like any other ordinance. There we go. It's under Chapter 166, and we have to do it to give the public a second opportunity, second bite at the apple. That's what we're going to do next. Thank you very much.
Going to get Mark. Do you want to say anything? Anyone from the public like to speak to this? Okay, saying none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We accept ordinance number 679 at the second and final reading.
The second.
Got a motion? Got a second? Haley?
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Papello?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, and ordinance 679 passes. And Mark, I was kind of hoping that you'd get up and speak, because if this lawyering thing doesn't work out for you, you can always be a good J.D. Vance impersonator.
You can always be a what?
Oh, man, J.D. Vance. I'm sure. I'm sure. You've got it nailed. You're perfect, so. Oh, boy. Okay, let's move on to item number seven, Resolutions. 7A, Resolution Number 32724. Mr. Reichman, you read that one, please.
Sure. This is a resolution, the City Council of the City of Orange City, Florida, appointing members to the Orange City Historic Preservation Board to fill vacancies 2, 3, 4, or 5, repealing our resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict or with, and providing for severability and effective date.
Becky Mendez.
Yes, I don't have a presentation because this is an administrative function. No, you'll have to deliberate amongst yourselves. We have, it's a five-member Historic Preservation Board. We've just recently changed the program. There are vacant seats number 2, 3, 4, and 5. Donna Cobb is the sitting chair of the board, and her term doesn't expire until September of next year. Seat number 2 was held by Thomas Hewitt beginning in 2021, and it expired on July 26 because we didn't have enough applications to bring this forward. He has requested reappointment. Seat number 3 was held by Thomas Idell. He resigned on July 22, 2024, and his seat is for a three-year term, which would expire, it expired on July 31.
26.
26. Seat 4 was held, resigned in August of 2023, and it has been vacant since that term, or since that time, and that term will expire in September of 2025, if filled. And seat number 5 was held by Emil Scipione, beginning in 2019, and it expired on July 26, 2024. And Mr. Scipione seeks reappointment as well for his seat 5. We advertise the vacant board positions besides the two requests for reappointment. We received two applications from members of the public, one being Alan James, which is a local contractor, moved here to Orange City, so it lives within the Orange City city limits, and Mark Carstens, which has historic preservation board experience, but he does live within unincorporated Volusia County. The code does say that all board members must live in the city except one. One can be appointed from outside of the city limits within the West Volusia area. And basically, the criteria, if you will, that the board should consider is that the members should have attributes such as civic pride, integrity, experience, and an interest in historic preservation. And desirable attributes as well include expertise in history, real estate or real property appraisal, urban planning, engineering, and building construction, or an architect. All four of the applications are eligible for appointment. The City Council can choose to appoint one or none, ask us to go back out for advertisement, and we will do whatever the City Council directs us to do so.
So these seats, these individuals are not applying for particular seats?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and so that's a good point. So it's a five-member board. We don't rely on, you know, the people don't have to be within a certain geographic area within their city. So the City Council as a whole council can appoint any member, citizen, to serve on any one of the seats. They don't have to live in a specific geographic area, I guess, for precise.
Okay, so Mr. Hewitt is currently in seat 2?
The term expired last, a few weeks ago. But yes, he had been in seat 2 since 2021.
Okay, and just quickly, go through these again, please.
Sure.
Okay, so Hewitt.
Was in seat 2 since 2021. Seat 3 has just resigned. There is nobody seeking reappointment. Seat 4 has been vacant since August 23, 2023. And seat 5 was held by member Scipione since 2019, which just expired a few weeks ago.
Okay.
And he is seeking reappointment.
Oh, and he is seeking reappointment. So we've got 2, 3, and 4.
Correct.
Seats 3 and 4. And we have 2 applicants. Correct.
You have 4 vacancies.
Four applicants.
Two of which, 2 members that had been in those 2 seats that are seeking reappointment.
Right.
The 2 other seats are open.
Right.
And are there how many applicants?
2.
2.
2 outside applicants. 1 and all of them, except Mark Carstens, live within the city limits.
Okay. All right, council.
I think I would, I would like to propose that we table this until after the elections because we may have some new people up here that may want to have their hand in that on who's going to be appointed to the historical board. And I think it would make sense to do that, to have the new people have a chance to have a say also.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, because they're the ones that are going to have to be working with them.
Right.
But I will say that I know Alan James, and he's a great guy.
Well, they all seem very qualified for it.
He really has good credentials and a great background in historical structures and building and so on.
And the 2 that are seeking reappointment were very well-rounded for the position, right? I just think that it's fair to do that. And maybe in the future, we might think about, it's just an idea, but we might think about doing like we do for the planning commission where, because I feel like we need more participation. There's still a seat open, right? So whether we have each council member go out and look for some people to run, because I know they had asked us to do that before, for that position, to be involved in the historical board, to help out, to get more people involved, because these 4 people stepped up and they want to do it. But wouldn't it be nice if we could fill all the seats, right? So just something to think about.
Well, you want to make a motion, or any further discussion?
I feel like, you know, we have these people that's willing to serve now. We have 4 people that said, okay, I'm ready to go now. We had empty spots on the board before. When I came on board, it was empty spots. So while we have citizens that want to be active and actively participate in what the history of Orange City is all about, I think we should give them an opportunity, not delay them until November, but let them come now and start working. So whoever they get in office next, they're understanding that, okay, we have these people that are ready to work. And when you bring someone else in, they'll be saying, okay, something has already been set up. We need to follow the plan.
I agree.
I mean, he, I can't think of the gentleman's name. I see him all the time. But he's been with the Historical Committee for years, and he's, hey, he's done a good job. So why delay? Why won't we just go ahead and allow these people to come on onboard? I know Alan James has been in the City of Orange City for as long as I can remember. Okay? And I'm not a young chicken, so he's been here a while. But I feel like we should just allow these people the opportunity to get ahead, start. Let's get things going. Let's stop stuttering, and let's go. Let's go.
I'm with you.
Make a motion.
Mayor.
Sir.
Add some more, some more color to the commentary. I like the thought of the 7. I think having that tie into the level of representation that we have up here affords more opportunities. I hear what you're saying, and I like what you're saying, because it's very hard for us to get anybody to come and really do this work, volunteering for no money. And having a body of folks, we do have one of them that is not present tonight, but they, next year, they're going to be, then perhaps they want to continue, maybe they won't continue. So how do we move forward with capturing this, these folks, and moving the concept of 7?
7 is way too many.
Too many?
Yeah. Probably 3 would be sufficient, as far as I'm concerned. The more people you have on the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The more people you have, the more chances you're going to have absentees, I think.
Okay.
That's my thought on that. You know, if you keep a small group that can work together and present their findings to us, I think that's a better way to go. And I'm talking from experience. I got a 9-panel board that I also run, and I can't get 100% participation. I can tell you how many times I've had 9 members of that board at the meeting. There's always one for some reason.
Right. If I may, Mayor.
Sir.
Thank you. I respected your perspective on this. If you have 7, and say, one of them doesn't show up, but it's always somebody different, right? Because people have bad days, people go to hospital and whatnot, right? But if you have 7, you have a greater pool. And you only need a quorum, so you need 4 to get anything done. So as long as you can pull 4, now I recognize your point. If you have 5, you got to have 3 to have a quorum.
And that's a lot easier to have 3 than to have 5.
I think when we're talking about the city, I respect that point. I see what you're saying. The diversity of folks, if you could have 7, and then have them tied to the representatives that are up here, then you have more diversity and an impetus for the individuals representing up here to be out in the community and drumming up said representatives. So one for each district, the at-large and the mayor, would be like, hey, my district, you know, at-large, I need somebody from at-large. I need somebody, you know, not necessarily they have to be geographically constrained a district or whatnot, but then you would have a requirement that you would get out there and perhaps drum that up. I see your point, but I also see that it's an opportunity to capture more, more participation.
Well, perfect example. You said this board, our board, could actually run with 5.
Correct.
So why would you want to have, or why would you need 7 for a historical preservation board? That's all I'm saying. If we could do with less, they could probably do it less, too.
Okay.
I like the idea of 5 myself. Either way, but I see your point, too.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, each person has a cohort nominee.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, since we are having this discussion, doesn't it make sense to table it so that we can decide? That's a different variable of what we're deciding tonight, whether we want to appoint them tonight, right? That's another variable. Do we want to change the dynamics of the board? Do we want to leave it the way it is? Do we want, you know, there's all these different options. So, you know, we appoint them tonight. If we appoint them tonight, that's a different subject, right, to come back and decide whether we want to do that. So it just makes sense to kind of bundle it all together, in my opinion, but I'm open.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that. And like I said before, there'll be new people up here, too. So if you do end up with 7, then you get the 7 new people with their designees.
Right.
I know one of the people that is running, and I've learned stuff from the person because he knows about, you know, the historic stuff. So it's kind of like, if this is something you really want, now you're going to be put to the side and wait? I'm not a big fan of that.
Well, it's not that long, and I can't speak for those people, but I'm sure they would wait, you know, 70.
Well, they don't have any choice.
70-some, 80 days, whatever it is, you know. So, it's council's decision. Anyone from the public want to speak on it while we're, okay, saying none?
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
Emil Scipione, 435 North Oak Avenue. I'm a current Historic Preservation Board member. My term expired in July. I'm seeking reappointment. I think it would be a disjustice to the city to delay the appointment. It takes time for new members to become, come up to speed. The first couple of meetings involve the education of the new board members and reinforcement of current board members. I would like to continue to ensure that the Historic Preservation Board will advise and make recommendations to the City Council regarding historic matters in a positive light. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mark Carstens, 2772 North Oak, Orange City, Florida. And I'm one of the applicants for the board. And I was, I've been working at the polls today, and I came here because I really want to get on the board and get on board with, you know, I really see a lot of positive things happening across the street with the Dickinson property, Francis Dickinson. They've brought it all the way back to Bearwood, and it looks like they're going to paint it, and they're doing it the right way. And I want to be part of that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what do y'all want to do? Come on up.
My name is Tom Hewitt. I'm 1060 Tappan Circle in Orange City, Florida. I was a current board member of the Orange City Historic Board, as my term has expired. I am seeking reelection, or reappointment to said board. I believe the city has a direct obligation to the citizens of Orange City to preserve and help preserve properties that are historic in nature, be it the age, because the criteria right now is 50. Be it the age, because the criteria right now is fifty years, over fifty years. Be it the age, be it who lived there, be it something important happened there or what it was used for. And I think that this board has a responsibility or this council has a responsibility to make sure the board has members on it at all times. And if it one disappears or one resigns, I believe the board has the opportunity and should appoint the next person that is available to that board. Because if one of you guys happen to resign, this council doesn't wait to fill the, fill the term. It goes ahead and appoints. And I think that should be the same way with all your boards. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? I think the problem I'm having is the Historic Preservation Board kind of went off the rails here a while ago. And, uh, maybe, you know, went a little beyond their, um, bounds of what they should have been doing. And that's why I'm supporting waiting for the new council that's going to have to work with these people all the time. Whether they'll get along with these people, I, I don't know. But I just think it would be prudent, uh, as Ms. Mark said, to, uh, you know, push, kick the can down the road a little bit and then, uh, let the new council appoint.
Yeah, I agree. I was going to say, you know, there's, there's some things that are in the application that, um, you know, some, some guidelines for being on this board. And that includes integrity and civic duty and things like that. And yes, you all have experience, I mean, or, or interest in history and I think that's wonderful. But we have had some hiccups here and I feel like, uh, we need to reboot, to restart. And, um, and make sure, like Scipione said, we need to be in a positive manner. We want to, we work good together, not apart, right? We need to work together as a team and we may not always disagree, or we may not always agree on things. But when we don't agree on things, you can't attack the board that put you there. You know what I mean? Like you can't do that. It's just not, it doesn't look good i- if your cities not working together, but that's a whole other story. So, I just, it goes back to what you said, Mr. Mayor, that I would like to see a board that works together. And by putting this off a little bit of time, we could potentially get some more people on that board that could make harmony, if you will.
And people that live in the city.
Right, right.
Mr. Mayor, council, just, I wanted to clarify one thing. And I'm not sure if this is what the gentleman was, was, uh, assinuating. But as far as filling vacancies, this isn't a point of board. And the, the qualifications, the standards, uh, Councilmember Marks indicated there were certain requirements or suggestions in Section 2.95 under membership. But there's no timeframes for appointment that are in your code. And I wanted to contrast that from a legal standpoint with filling vacancies. If one of you were not, you know, if there was a vacancy created for the mayor's position or one of the council, that's, those are specific timeframes that are set forth in your charter and in your code. So, yes, there are limitations time-wise for filling vacancies on council. And the reason is because it's specified in your charter and your code. I just want to make that point, that there is no similar or comparable obligation for this council to fill a vacancy for, on the Historic Preservation Board, as there would be an obligation for you to fill a vacancy on the city council.
Thank you. All right, let's have some action, one way or the other.
I'd like to make a motion to table it until after elections.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it, see where it goes.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Any further discussion?
Councilmember Stafford?
No.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
No.
Councilmember Papello?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, and the motion passes. All right, let's move on to item number seven, resol- where are we at? Item seven?
7B.
7B. I'm not doing my little scratch outs like I normally do. Okay, 7B, resolution number 331-24. Mr. Raichman, will you read that one, please?
Yes, the title of this resolution is, as this follows. It's a resolution, the City Council, City of Orange City, Florida approving Liberty Station Platte for 50.37 acres more or less located at 2110 East Graves Avenue, Orange City, Florida, providing for conditions of approval, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict or with, uh, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Uh, and this is a quasi judicial matter, so if there've been any ex parte communications on this, um, before this evening, those should be disclosed.
Anyone have any ex parte communication?
Well, it's the rec, record reflect, there've been no ex parte communications. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Becky Mendez, Development Services Director. This is the final platte for the Liberty Station. It's under construction right now, the corner of Graves, Veterans Memorial Parkway in Kentucky. Um, if any of you all drive out that way, I'm sure you've, um, seen it under construction. This is the, really the last, um, it's the final platte. Um, it's really the last in a, in a stage of, um, of development approvals and this is the last one. So, I'm, I am going to go back to 2006, um, because the city council in 2006, uh, approved the rezoning for 292 townhomes and 15,000 square feet of retail on 35 acres. Um, it was primarily this top portion, right at the corners of VMP, Graves and Kentucky. It did not include the golf course property that surrounds Sherwood Oaks. And we all know what happened in 2006. We've, we've had, we've had a lot of those projects come back before, um, city council. A lot of them were approved and then languished and then never moved forward with development. So, in 2020, they, the applicant applied for a major amendment to the PUD, which is processed as a regular rezoning and reduced the entitlements of the property to this portion, 170 dwellings, a reduction from the 292, and added, again, almost 15 acres of the golf course property as perpetual open space as part of the rezoning reveal. So, it, about the end of 2021, the city council reviewed the preliminary platte, which is this drawing, um, that's on, on the, these are the townhome development, the 70 units that are townhomes are here. These are detached, single-family dwellings. Massachusetts is a dirt road connection right now that goes out to Veterans Memorial Parkway, but there's a gate here. Um, these two property owners use Massachusetts that comes out just a little, um, north. Actually shares kind of this driveway with Sherwood Oaks, um, to the north. And Liberty Station is paving and realigning that Massachusetts to a public standard and will attach to Kentucky. Liberty Station developer also dedicated right-of-way, um, along these portions of Kentucky and they are doing their improvements to Kentucky Avenue. They are not part of the Kentucky Avenue Special Assessment District because the Special Assessment District did Kentucky South from where, and picked up where Liberty Station is leaving off. All of the city portion, I believe, is almost done. Um, and, and Liberty Station is starting on their portion of Kentucky now. In April 2023, so the city council approved this plan, um, but it wasn't until April 2023 that the construction drawings, if you will, um, got to a point where we could issue the development order or put that shovel in the ground, as we like to say. So, that's when construction began. Um, daily work has been occurring since that time. It includes new water and sewer reclaim line extension, which will be public lines. Um, the new, the local roads inside the subdivision will be paved, public roads that will be, come under ownership and maintenance responsibility of the city. Uh, they are obviously reconstructing the Kentucky Avenue now, which also will be, is dedicated, public right-of-way to the city. The stormwater ponds, which are primarily in the, in the northeast corner and, um, at the northwest corner are the two major ones. The, the other open space, this is a historic tree that they've built around and are saving that tree. So, there were some large trees that they designed around during that rezoning process. All of those common open space areas and stormwater will remain private. And part of this agenda item today is to approve the final platte, but also a maintenance agreement between the city and Liberty Station HOA for maintenance of those common areas. This is what the platte looks like. So, we move from nice color, um, picture diagrams, but, um, to a final platte, which is very survey-oriented, black and white descriptions are made. It's a multiple sheet, um, platte, I have it here, um, on Mylar that gets recorded, that will actually create those lots. And one of the, one of the conditions of that 2020 PUD rezoning was that Liberty Station, and now you can't see it because you don't have the aerial. This is the, the, um, Sherwood Oaks existing residential subdivision. And they have benefited from those vacant, from the golf course holes, you know, they were developed and the golf course holes surround it on all four sides. And so, through the Liberty Station rezoning, those, at least three of the golf course holes will remain as permanent open space. And liber- or, I'm sorry, Sherwood Oaks subdivision have existing their stormwater ponds on somebody else's private property. Through the course of this platte, those stormwater ponds for Sherwood Oaks are here, here, here and here. So, they kind of wrap around on the outside perimeter of the actual subdivision. This platte will dedicate those tracks, creating an actual parcel. And also, that will be recorded at the time of the final platte, is the warranty deed coming from Park Square Homes to Sherwood Oaks HOA. And those documents will be recorded there in the possession of the, of the city clerk. And if the final platte is approved, all of those documents get recorded at the same time. Also includes, again, that maintenance agreement. And because the infrastructure, the public infrastructure is not done yet, they're getting close. Um, our code and Florida statute allows a final platte to be recorded if they, um, put up what we call a performance guarantee, which is 110% of the construction cost estimate for the public infrastructure. That totals $8.9 million. They've given us that performance guarantee, which will become effective upon approval of the final platte. The Kentucky Avenue, we had a separate maintenance, or, um, a memorandum of understanding with the developer. We got the, the performance guarantee, um, back in January of 2023 in the amount of $727,000. In case Liberty Station didn't perform, then we would, we would either construct it ourselves as the city or put them in the Special Assessment District. So, that was just a, we got that, um, a while ago before we ever allowed them to start construction. The platte complies with Florida statute. It's a statutory requirement that it come to a public hearing. And staff recommends that you approve the final platte, accept the performance guarantee and authorize the signatures on the final platte and the HOA maintenance agreement that, again, is in possession of the city clerk.
Great. Uh, council, any questions, comments for Becky? Seeing none, anyone from the public like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and bring it back to council for action.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 331-24.
A second.
Got a motion, we got a second, no further discussion?
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yeah.
Councilmember? Thank you.
Same thing.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Papello?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, and Resolution 331-24 passes. Let's move on to item number eight, discussions and action. Nothing there, no one has anything. Uh, item number nine, reports, city manager.
Yeah. One, one very, um, short report. As you know, um, most of the time, um, Magdalia takes all amendments to our SRF grants to you for approval. Um, this time around, I went ahead and signed an amendment. It was simply for an extension of time because we're having problems getting parts for the panels that we need to hook up City Hall and Wabah Hall to the septic-to-sewer conversion. Um, it, now, I signed it, they approved it this morning. Just wanted to make you aware, aware of that action. It was done out of expedience and I felt comfortable doing it. There was, it's perfectly legal, but there was no money involved, so.
It was reviewed by our office, this Lee Licks up.
That's all.
That's it. Any questions or anything for the city manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the city clerk's report.
Um, I just have, just something short. So, the West Fallujah NAACP has reached out and they invited council to the 31st Annual Freedom Fund Banquet. This event is included in the council's budget. However, they do have sponsorship levels. If council wanted to choose one of the sponsorship levels or just purchase the individual tickets, what is currently budgeted in the council's budget is for individual tickets. But I wanted to bring that opportunity forward. And I do have summaries of the different sponsorship levels. Um, there's a diamond sponsorship for 2,500, a platinum sponsorship for 1,500, a gold sponsorship for 1,000 and a silver sponsorship for 500. If council wanted to choose a different.
Are you going to give us a handout or?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, how much are the individual tickets?
$100.
$100, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a question? Do we do any other, um, banquets like this? Do we sponsor any other banquets?
Hang, hang on one moment, let me look it up in my budget book.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, just trying to have a guide.
I'm not, I don't think so.
I, I put it over here, so give me one second.
I'd just like to know, because if we do for one, we should do for all.
So, I, I don't think we do, um, I, I don't think we do. The, I want to say, uh, putting the NAACP, uh, tickets in here, uh, happened some times ago when they came and requested the council, um, purchase tickets for their event. Underneath your special events, you buy dinner tickets for the NAACP event, the Team Fallujah event. And then you have, and that's really pretty much it. Other items that are funded are all of your Florida League of Cities dinners. And we've got a little bit in here for miscellaneous events. You know, since you all are members of the breakfast rotary, uh, you do their breakfast and it's billed back to us. But that's pretty much it. But, you know, as, as, um, you, you get invited to a great many, uh, galas, um, items and they're not in your budget. I, I would say your budget would grow substantially if you went to everything you were invited to. So. But this, this one item is in your budget for the dinner tickets. Mr. Williams wrote to both Kaylee and I asking you if you wanted to upgrade what you currently do, so.
So, that's seven tickets.
At $100 apiece, I believe.
Okay, so if everyone wanted to go, they Okay, so if everyone wanted to go, they could go. And if you wanted to bring someone with you, you'd just pay the extra hundred yourself.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I thought it was only four tickets.
There's seven one hundred dollar tickets in the budget, is that correct?
Okay.
She did say four, though.
She did, that's why I was reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, that's why we clarified.
Yes, I'm sorry if I did say four, no, it's, um, you do have 700 budgeted.
Thank you.
However, if you wanted to go for one of the sponsorship levels, those come with a variety of number of tickets as well. So it's really up for your discussion, how you want to move.
I, I think, you know, one ticket each would be fine if everybody wants to go, maybe everyone won't go, who knows? But, uh, yes, ma'am.
I haven't gotten a form, I don't even know how. And I was interested in it when I saw it today, because the key speaker is the mayor of Orange County. And I'd like to hear.
Jerry Demings, yeah, he's, he's a pretty dynamic speaker.
I will definitely get it on your calendar. So the event date is going to be, um, September 14th. It's a Saturday at 6:00 PM, and it'll be held at the center at Deltona.
September 14th, at what time?
Uh, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
And I'll have it on your calendars tomorrow.
Okay, we all, everybody good with that? Anybody opposed to that? Anything good?
Yes, thank you. I think that's, we already have that budgeted, so I think that's.
Okay. All right, anything else, Kaylee?
That's all I have.
That's all she's got. Any questions or anything for city clerk? If not, move on to the city attorney.
Nothing further to report this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Like your style there, Mr. Reichman, like your style. Any questions or anything for the city attorney?
No.
Okay, any new business, item number 10? Seeing no new business, put minutes, that's, uh, moot issue, council comments, anyone have any comments, Ms. Darms?
Well, uh, what is it, about a week or two ago, um, Lisa and I were at the Hispanic Chamber Commerce Event, and she got called up, and she got this plaque because Orange City has, was chosen by them as the 2024 Municipality Partner of the Year. So I wanted to.
I ended up with it.
We got called up.
Well, you went up. So, um, I want to present this to, um, and it's signed by Lourdes and Joseph Hearn. I don't know how we want to put this, where we want to put this.
Give it to the clerk, she'll take care of it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's better to be called up than to be called out, right?
Or called down.
Called down, yeah. Okay, anyone else have any, you done, Fran?
I'm done, yes.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? Or anything? Okey dokey. I guess most of us are going to the Florida League of Cities meeting this week in Howlandale. Bring your bicycles, there's a beautiful bike trail, they run seven miles along the ocean down there.
I roller skated it before.
Might want to do that. But at any rate, so I'll be looking forward to some nice, lengthy reports at the next meeting of all the seminars and things that everyone's gone to. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.